Good evening and welcome to the September 19th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Tom Kendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Lord, grant us your serenity and be looking with a watchful eye upon our community as we go forward this evening with this meeting and in the days to come. Be with our first responders as they work to protect our city and be with our service people here domestically and abroad as they protect our nation and provide us continually with the freedoms that we have. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members are present.
Tonight, we have the Mayor's Youth Council with us. Mr. Tim Davis and Mr. Grant Kerber are the advisors, and I believe Tim is doing the introductions this evening.
We have three retired Mayor Youth Council members. Two of the three here today, I think, have received the highest attendance in their duration, so we're excited about that. When you get into the seventh grade, because the Mayor Youth Council is fifth and sixth grade, it can involve a lot more activities and makes it harder for the individuals to come, so that's kind of why they retire in a junior high, and we're, of course, enough to have three, so...
Tim, if you don't mind using the microphone so that the picks up on the...that's okay. Thank you.
First, we have Anna Bozey. And you may know Margaret Snee.
I will just say that Tim Davis, Grant Kerber, Beth and Carla Davis and Beth Kerber are also advisors to the Mayor Youth Council, and they do a lot to keep us with a lot of activities for our young people to do. And we also have seven others that are seventh graders, as Tim said, are pretty active and they have activities and could be with us tonight, but we will give their certificates and awards to them as well. So I'll have Tim introduce the returning veterans and the new fifth graders.
We'll start with the new fifth graders simply because they're excited. They were awfully excited to learn that they are on TV. So we talked about being livestreamed and on the YouTube channel, so if you're looking at the YouTube tomorrow and you see an increase in number of hits, it's probably them watching themselves. So I'll bring them up when I call your name. If you'd just come up and just stand up here. First, we'll have Ronan Watkins. Ronan is from Cookson Elementary School. Next, we have Elizabeth Catwick. Elizabeth is from Concord. Next, we have Landon Hill. Landon is from Forbes Elementary. We have Kellen Miller. Kellen's not as tall as his father yet, but he comes to us from Haywood. Next, we have Robert Cox. Robert is from Hook. Then we have Sienna Slater. Sienna is from Kyle. Next, we have Nathan Hardew. Nathan is from Troy Christian. And we said we save the last for best for last. Cooper Deuce from St. Pass. And then before we applaud them, I'll bring the returning Mayor Youth Council members. We have three of them here. Lucas Buscher. Tori Ricks. And Allison Wolf. These are our Mayor Youth Council members. For the rest of the meeting, I told them they didn't have to. We have a year full of commitments, so we're going to let them sneak out early tonight, if that's okay.
Hey, Tim, you better let them turn around if they want to see their...
Oh, that is true. Sorry. You may want to turn around. Wave to the camera.
Yeah, wave to the camera.
Very good. Very good.
We can have all of them there?
Yeah, we'd be like right in this window.
Well, if we just march out, see if I'll get them there. So if you want to start, Ronan.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Center.
Thank you, Marty. A few years back, we used to have this event called Evening with Friends, and we would invite the Troy Police, the Fire Department, City Council, and it was kind of one of those things that you were all so overwhelmed with all of these commitments that we decided to start bringing treats to you. And so tonight, it is City Council's turn. So we have some cookies prepackaged for you. Please take them and thank us, and we appreciate everything you do for us.
Senator Deuce also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of September 19th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, September 19, 2016. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that two rezonings, Ordinance 042 and 043, be approved. Committee recommends legislation be prepared to approve Section 4 of Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development. Finance Committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee recommends legislation be prepared approving a $23,383 loan to Integrity Services AES LLC. Committee recommended legislation be prepared accepting tax levies for the City of Troy certified by the Mammoth County Budget Commission. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that the consent legislation provided by ODOT to participate in a bridge inspection program be approved. Resolution R40 2016 authorizing tax levies was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution Number R41 2016 approving the application of Integrity Services AES LLC for a loan from the Small Business Development revolving loan fund, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R42 2016 participate in bridge inspection program, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 042 2016, a zoning first...was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance 043 2016, a zoning was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance 046 2016 authorizing release of mortgage for T&amp;M Troy Properties LLC was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance 047 2016 accepting final plat Stonebridge Meadows Plan Development, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, Council adjourned at 7:26 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move we accept the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath. To accept the minutes, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
Tonight, the Safety and Health Committee has one report for us. Chairwoman Mrs. Oda will present that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This committee met without me on September 26th to discuss the 2017 funding of the Miami County Health District. Troy's funding is based on the millage equivalent as paid by 22 of the 24 political subdivisions in the county for public health services. Troy's payment is funded from the General Fund. The 2017 Miami County Public Health Funding would be $339,090.60, an increase of .09% over the 2016 funding. It is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the 2017 funding to the Miami County Health District for Public Health Services for Troy citizens in the amount of $339,090.60. Respectfully submitted, John Twilliger, Brock Heath, and myself in absentia.
Are there any questions from council on the report? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address before addressing council. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R43 2016.
Resolution R43 2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Miami County General Health District for Health Services. The 2017 funding will be $339,090.60. This is a first reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R44 2016.
Resolution Number R44 2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Miami County Public Defenders Commission for 2017. This will be a cost of $20,341.13, no increase from 2016, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read Ordinance 048 2016.
Ordinance Number 048 2016, an ordinance amending Sections 1143.13, 1143.14, 1143.16 of the zoning code of the City of Troy, Ohio, and enacting Section 1149.13 and Section 1149.14 of the code of the zoning code of the City of Troy, Ohio, related to the retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana within the City of Troy, Ohio. This is a first reading. There will be a public hearing at the meeting of 10:17. This does prohibit medical marijuana under most of the zoning regulations and does limit the five to dispensaries, first reading.
So this will go to a second reading. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
Yes, only that the county has filed back with the city, the annexation known as the First Troy Corp. Annexation, 55.80 acres from Concord Township. Under the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code, council will do nothing with this for the first 60 days and thereafter, then it can be presented for legislation.
Thank you. Tonight, we welcome Mr. J.C. Wallace, Chief Executive Officer of the Troy Development Council, to provide an update to council. Good evening, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do have a handout I'd like to kind of refer to as we go through the agenda. I've been asked to keep it very brief because we have lots of things going on and want to talk about all of them, so I'm just going to keep it to the minimum. The Troy Development Council was started in 1983, and since that time, the City Council has been a great partner with the private sector. I think it's one of the successful private-public sector economic development programs in the state. I came to you about five years ago to talk about our Partners in Progress Initiative, and we are just now completing our Partners in Progress Initiative, and we are starting on our new five-year program. So basically, the Troy Development Council is funded basically by the City of Troy, by 40 different organizations. Those are our companies that are in the community, our educational organizations, and this last year, we have gotten about $50,000 to $60,000 in grants from DPNL and the Troy Foundation to help us with our workforce programs. So four years ago, we really came to the business community and said, what are your greatest needs? Attracting businesses was one thing, but retaining businesses and helping our companies basically hire people was our big initiative, and since that time, as I'll go through this, we've started a number of programs as we've gone through. If you go to page four, you'll see we started Troy Career Connect, which I think is really getting a lot of traction as far as being one way that people are going to find jobs in the Troy area. We have 2,700 people that are getting our emails, that have signed up for our app. If you look at our Google Analytics, basically, we are really focused on the young people. Most of the people that are coming here have either seen us or they're going to Google searches. So if you look at finding jobs in Troy, Ohio, if you do a Google search, you're going to find that we are pretty much on the first page every time. So we have really been working on that aspect of let's list all the jobs and tell people what jobs we have, because it's amazing. People talk about, you know, there aren't any jobs here, and it's amazing how all of our employers are expanding and looking for people, and it's kind of a national trend that I think right now in Troy, it's a unique time where all of our employers are hiring. It's not just a couple of them. We're seeing right across the board, everybody, our 70 employer, employee companies are looking to hire four or five people, and our bigger companies are looking to hire 20 or 30 people at a time. So the war for talent is really alive and well. I think this is going to give us an advantage as we keep moving forward. One of the things that we've really been working on is working the kinks out of this website so that when we start advertising, people will find it easy to use. We just started doing Facebook advertising and finding 6,500 people taking a look at our website. So this year, we really are planning on ramping up our Troy Career Connect. The next page I wanted to just mention was Troy, Ohio, USA, and we talked about that, and I know that you've seen the drone shots of us taking a drone over the city and trying to create a recruitment website for companies so that when people are looking to come to Troy, they're looking at something, our story, you know? What do we look like and how do we sell that? And for quite a while, on YouTube, we didn't look so good, and I think we've kind of turned the corner with our YouTube channel, and I really think Troy, Ohio, USA is something when I go and talk to the employers, and I just went and met with 27 of them over the last month and a half about what can we do to help you. Recruiting people and helping list their jobs were the two things that really resonated with our companies. This year, if you would also like to go to see Troy, Ohio, USA, we started doing recruitment videos for our employers. We did one for FNP America and one for Clopay, and if you look at those, we tweaked them a number of times, but having young people sell the community and actually selling why they want to work for this employer is something I think we've learned a lot about how to do that. So we've been doing this with our videographer out of North Carolina, and so as we, now that we have a format down, we're looking to expand that to other employers. The next page, the other project that we're wrapping up this week is the Regional Wage and Benefits Survey, which has basically been sponsored by the Troy City Schools. It used to be just the Shelby Miami County Wage and Benefits Survey. This year, we expanded it to Mercer, Dark, and Ogles County to get an idea of what's really happening with wages and benefits. It's kind of, I think, a very important tool for our employers to see where they match up with their competition. And then our next project that's coming on November 9th is the Career Day and Job Fair, which is going to be at Hobart Arena again. We developed a number of programs for promoting careers for high school students. This year, we've grown our event, the Troy Career Day, to over 1,200 students. We basically started out with four different school districts. Now we're up to 12 school districts, so we're going to have all the school districts in the county attending the event. I think it's unique in the fact that we're promoting our companies throughout the county. I don't know anybody else that's doing this on the local, up to the scale that we're doing, and I think it's really paid us a lot of dividends. We've been promoting jobs in manufacturing, and when we started this, nobody wanted to go into manufacturing. And now, last year, our surveys of students said that 36% of the students would think about a career in manufacturing. So I think we're kind of getting the story out that manufacturing isn't what it used to be. It is basically where our highest wage is and 36% of our wealth of our community comes from. In conjunction with that, we found out that doing it just one day a year is not going to work. So we've taken it upon ourselves to work with the city schools and with the other school districts to actually take students out into the manufacturing plants. We're going to be doing that this Friday for Manufacturers' Day, the National Manufacturers' Day, and last year, we added a Junior High Day where we took all the junior high students out to a number of different manufacturing facilities. We've been really fortunate in the fact that the schools have allowed us to set up booths, set up tables within the school districts, within the high schools, to actually have our employers come in and talk about their employment opportunities. So we're really not only busing students in, but also taking the opportunity to actually have the employers go into the schools. The other program that I think has a lot of merit, that I think we can learn a lot from, was our trip this year to the Hanover Trade Show. We took the Upper Valley Career Center to look at the German apprenticeship model, and in Germany, 80% of their high school students are involved in an apprenticeship program where they're learning a skill about how to get into a business. And we're really fortunate in the fact that Upper Valley Career Center and Miami Valley CTC are two schools in the state of Ohio that have an approved apprenticeship program. So if a company wants to start hiring high school students and put them in an apprenticeship program, they don't have to start a whole program over again. It's already a certified program. So that's had a lot of resonance with our companies that are starting to look at how do we engage high school students before they start goofing around and hanging out in their basement and stuff? Let's get them to go to work, and that's been something that I think our employers, especially our larger employers, are saying, we want to really engage the high school students and get them into manufacturing careers. So as far as workforce goes, we've done a lot of this through grant funding over the past year. Grant funding, you know, is usually for one year, so as we look at how we're going to fund our programs moving forward, we're going to need to look at, you know, other foundation funding, more investment by our companies, and looking at an overall program. So in October 21st, we're going to have a retreat to kind of put together our next five-year program that's going to follow the Partners in Progress Initiative. So I just want to kind of mention that I think workforces are a major focus. The two other things that I'm hearing from companies, and we're going out to meet with our investors, is first of all, we have a lot of landlocked companies that need more property, and, you know, that, what a great problem to have. You know, we have a lot of companies that need to have larger spaces because everybody is thinking about expanding. So I want to say, when we start talking about that, I talk to them about what the city did for Clopay and the fact that you guys went out and did a lot of things, putting in the traffic light on 55, the kind of things that really helped Clopay grow. And then I also talk about all the things that the City Council did for ConAgra by doing Dimehill Road and the fact that the City Council and the Troy City government is such a great partner, which you don't get in a lot of communities. And so, you know, when people are talking about expanding, there's really no reason to go somewhere else because, you know, I think you guys are as responsive and have met the needs of our business community every time. So just on the final page, you know, there's always lots of great ideas. I kind of gave you some examples of some of the plans that have expanded, Segna, Arc abrasives, the investments, Honda's new natural gas distribution facility, and then all of the investments that you guys are making in the Hobart Arena and Treasure Island, I think, says, I think we're really in an economic renaissance on Troy, Ohio. So we're looking for how do we share the ideas and talk about that. And then on the final page, I will say that when we finished up America's Best Community, which I thought was a great project, we should have won. We should still be there, but, you know, if Portsmouth made it, that says something about what they were looking for. But we came out of that, last year, we engaged 5,000 people across the community to look not only at the business needs, but what is it that we should be doing as a community to continue to grow? And the issues that came out of that were... And, and the issues that came out of that was the Explore Troy, having an event calendar that everyone can go to, our Future Sustainable Leadership Initiative, which is, how do we take Leadership Troy and Teen Leadership Troy and continue to grow the leaders of the future in our community? Our Broadband Infrastructure Initiative, which was really important for you guys to buy into, Frontier's program, and Frontier spent ten million dollars beefing up our, our internet broadband service in Troy, and they're looking at bringing new products to the community. So, I'm very encouraged about our infrastructure initiative. And finally, the Downtown Riverfront Initiative. I know we're going to be talking about that, but, but that, I think, is an important new project that we, we, as the TDC is, we are investing twenty-five thousand dollars in that, to work on the study to keep us moving forward in that regard, so. I will say, was that short enough, Patrick? But, with that, with that, I'd like to open up to any questions you guys may have.
Any council members? I have just wanted to kick it off. When you do the videos and things for these companies, to put, you know, the individual companies, are you charging for those, or is TDC funding that entire effort?
Well, we, we came, we came up with a couple demos that we paid for ourselves and, and priced it out. So, basically, we have a, kind of a package, which is two thousand dollars, which is a super discounted price. So, yeah, we are charging for that.
I didn't know if you were, you know, trying to cover your costs on those by companies, or...
Yeah, that, that really doesn't even cover our costs, but it's a, it's a super subsidized project. And surprisingly, for our, our big companies, the people know who they are, it's great. For the people that don't have the name recognition that Honda does or ETC, I think they're looking at that to say, "Wow, this is something that can really help us, is building name recognition as we go," so.
Right. Mr. Phillips, you have a question?
It's not a question, but it's a comment, and kudos to TDC and the Chamber and your staff and that. With the small events that you guys put on, such as your golf outing, where you get business leaders and others together in a small room, that they can have conversations that are outside the workplace and outside of these larger events, just for those partnerships, even for the city of Troy being a small city, or it's a good size in the state of Ohio, but a, a small city of twenty-five thousand people, it's good to have the interconnectivity of just the attorneys and accountants and others that are behind some of these things, and it's, it's very good. So, those events are just as important as these larger events, and it's outstanding with the, the high schools and the junior highs and, and push towards that. Of course, we've talked about that for several years, but it's, it's just outstanding to have these things going on that you do, so kudos for that.
I'm just really great, I'm so thankful that the participation is there, you know, to get people that are really busy. I mean, we have a lot of business leaders that are on planes every day, they're in town for one day a month, and they show up for an event to kind of learn, you know, learn what's going on with the other companies. It's really been, I think, really great. So, I appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Anyone? No? Thank you very much for the report. We appreciate it very much. Thanks. Next, Councilman John Terwilleger will provide an update on the activities of the Mayor's Advocacy Cycling Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Who are we? The Mayor's Bicycling Advisory Committee is a group of volunteers, originally developed under the leadership of Mayor Beamish, Tom Kendall, and Stan Kegley, who had this vision. Through their leadership, we were able to receive a bronze national certificate medal. About a year ago, we kind of restructured, we tried to up the numbers of volunteers within our committee, so that Tom and Stan weren't besieged by varieties of different activities. We have a variety of people now trying to assume different roles of leadership. We are bronze, we're trying to work to become more basic concepts. We want to be diverse, we want to be user-friendly, and we want to be safe, and we want to provide opportunities for a variety of cyclists, not motor, but bike. But then, we also spin off a little bit with the bicycles, when you start talking about some of our students, adults with disabilities or challenges, to try to make our bike paths and bikeways usable and adaptable to their needs. We're really trying to paint kind of a small picture with a wide brush, because the dynamics of cycling are constantly changing. Not more than thirty-five minutes ago, forty minutes ago, we heard a report on the highways. We have a chart over, next to the wall, which is a five or six revision plan, started probably three and four years ago by Tom, Tim Davis, Stan Kegley, and our safety directors within the community of Troy, to try to develop safe and usable trails within our existing infrastructure or highways. I might add to that, that on October 6th of this week, Thursday, we will, I'm not certain how many there are, maybe six or nine of us who are taking a bicycle ride, is called a SAVE program, sponsored by the state. They're actually going to put us in crash helmets and put us on bikes, and we're going to ride the streets of Troy. They're going to educate us in, in regards to how one creates safe bike lanes, how to gain access and egress from various different locations and situations, not only so we can deal with the normal rider, but also with those persons who might have disabilities and/or challenges. On the handout that I gave you, who are we? I hope I've just quickly done that. What, what have we done? To the left-hand side, those are active programs that you may hear of. Some of the programs you will probably be hearing something about. This is our third year of a Clean Trails program. We have seven community groups who go from the low bridge behind Miami Shores Golf Course, extending north to the nope ball fields. Those volunteer groups take a section, and they clean, and that's through the cooperation of Jeremy Drake. Website, on the second page of that little handout, this year, we, we developed a website to be put on the city webpage. That just kind of checks a box off in our hopes to achieve higher certification. We hope to improve this. This was the first one. There is a mistake that we found on that one, and that has to be corrected, because Mr. Friggy's name was left off that bad boy, and you do not bite the dog. Mr. Friggy is the supervisor for Troy High School's Interact, and they also take a section of the road, along with Ron Erwin, Erwin Chrysler Jeep, their grandchildren, they've got a section that they're taking. But that's worked out well. The next page that you've got is a gazebo structure. This is going up on the bike trail. This was a donation in kind from a husband-wife group here in Troy. They, this came out of the blue, just out of the blue. They said that this is something that they would like. This gazebo, having gone, oh, boy, how many revisions? Six different locations? I had no clue this was an education in city government, for me, in that you need easements under DPNL power lines, water lines, the conservancy, a variety of different things. We now have a location for this. It's going to be on the Miami Shores levee, head up Rutherford Drive. You turn left into the parking lot, but right in front of you, people are using an access to the river. The gazebo structure will be going up there. It'll have bike racks. On the next page, you'll see this little two-eyed, yellow-looking monster. That is a bike repair kit. There will be a repair station at that location. All of this material is not costing the city a thing. It's in donations of kind. Those little, those are cables with instruments, tools that supposedly cannot be stolen, and we've got a pump that goes with it, that's not supposed to be stolen either. Okay. What other things have we done? Clear trails, the website, we've got this gazebo structure going on. The next page, this is one of our little adventures, Timba, Troy Mountain Bike Association. The flat floodplains at Duke Park has become the central location for a six-mile, flat, originally mountain bike, but mountain bike has now become fat tire. They weren't happy with just a moderately large tire. They've got this gigantic thing that they now ride on. They have, in the floodplain, a flat area, pl- well, that is basically the red line that you see on your handout. That's what they've cut in there. And when I say "they," that was originally about six people. But if you look on the last page, you can see the bottom two pictures are a collection of the individuals who are racing out there now and have held in the last three weeks, three separate time trials. I went out last week, and there were about twenty-four people involved in one in the evening, so that is a very active area. That's one that you may hear. That's become so active that it's now forcing us to work a little bit harder on signs, because what's happened is, with the help of Jeremy Drake, they cut in the trails, and they round up, and that's nice, and that's level, and now we have people discovering it, and they're walking their dogs on it, and that's creating challenges for those people on the fat tire bikes. So, we have to venture into a new area, which is a good problem, because it's being used. Okay, I, it's right there. You can see what we're trying to do. I don't need to read all of those. The proposed things, there's a couple, and I think one that's close to all of us is we're trying to develop the Treasure Island as a hub. Bikers like to ride loops. They don't like to ride long lines, out to a point and back to where they started. They like to do loops. With that, there's a variety of programs. We got this YEAH thing that is the streets and cities. In Dayton, next year, there's going to be an International Trail Symposium that we hope we will be able to get involved with in some ways. There is the variety of different state cycling programs that we're still trying to stay in contact with, that can be nice revenue producers for our community. One of our proposed projects is business partnerships, to try to make this program sensible, usable, but also bragable, because we have, down there, we can see, we've got a lot of assets in this community that the bike trails could enhance, that we could become partners with if we do it in a sensible, smooth way. The Troy, the Treasure Island Hub's a big one. It's a big one, and I think it's very usable. We can go on with a lot of stuff, but, I mean, there it is, and I, I don't want you to get caught off guard. We got caught off guard a little bit earlier this year, and this is just, here's what's there. And if you have a question on things, we're more than happy to attempt to give you some insight.
Any questions from council members on the bicycle efforts?
Maybe one comment in, in support. The things that we're doing that are, that are proposed, that we're working on now, are all in an effort and geared towards our obtaining a silver status as, as we go forward. To get bronze was, was one thing. Now, to go to that next level, it's, it's a bronze plus again, so. And, and we went through the reports and, and the ratings we got, and, and identified the shortfalls that we had in, in able to allow us to move up to the next level, and those are the areas that we're addressing now, so.
In addition to obtaining that silver level, though, I would hope that most of the effort is being done for our citizens and to give them some options.
Right.
Not just to get an outside award from someplace.
But, but that's what, that's part of what the award looks at, is what, what, you know, the population of a community, we, we need to identify that as we go forward with it, so.
Any other questions from council members, comments? Thank you, Mr. Terwilleger, for the report. Appreciate it. Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments this evening?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington?
Just a couple of brief reminders. First of all, just to remind everybody that Trick or Treat is on Halloween, October 31st, that's a Monday, that'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Second is that, as we reported in the items of interest, we have started leaf pickup for the, for the year, started today. We'll go two and possibly three rounds. It's probably pretty light right now, and that will pick up as, as time goes on. We do have that information on our website if people want more details. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Mr. Kerber, any comments this evening?
No, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Friggy, do you have any comments for us?
I have nothing at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. I would just briefly like to thank the Troy Fire Department for the open house yesterday. I think you had a great turnout and beautiful day, and I appreciate their efforts. Are there any comments from council members this evening? Any comments from city staff or anyone else in the audience? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week. Meeting ends here.